The regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Henderson, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I remind those in attendance that if you wish to speak during the citizen comment period or public hearings, because we don't have any of those this evening, but to please do so in the back of the council chambers on the desk right by the front door. The second item on the agenda this evening is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt this consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number three is matters from City Council members. Does anybody think have anything to share this evening?
I have some, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I talked to Mr. Hamp the other day about, seems like we're having more and more bear sightings and bear population in the city. So I just wanted to ask him tonight what the procedures are and what, if anything, we're going to try to do since it seems to be more and more.
So, Mr. Allen and members of council, this presentation may be, may leave you wanting more and may leave the listening public wanting more, but surprisingly, bear are common in the Commonwealth of Virginia and their presence in more urban locations is increasingly common in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so it's not, how would I say this accurately? Communities and even the wildlife agencies themselves are messaging that it's something that we come to terms with and react to in more of a normal fashion rather than an exceptional and emergency fashion. But in the event, and we realize that citizens in the community will have varying levels of experience and comfort with wildlife and especially somewhat dangerous wildlife such as the black bear. So if you encounter a bear in your neighborhood and you feel the need to call 911, we will dispatch an officer to the scene. The mission and objective of that officer, however, is going to be preserve safety. So if residents are viewed sort of out observing the bear or out in the neighborhood in the area around the bear unknowingly so, they'll be encouraged to return to their homes and allow the bear to exit the neighborhood or pass through the neighborhood safely. We typically will not come and either through loud noise or other demonstrative or action try to chase the bear away. That is discouraged, that can agitate wildlife and depending on the circumstance may make the situation more risky for residents. The Department of Game and Inland Fisheries has a lot of guidance on their website about how urban dwellers should deal with bear. And one of the things that they point out is that always give the bear safe passage. So typically in an urban environment, as long as the bear has an avenue of escape, it won't escalate the problem in its encounter with the human being. If you have a situation with a bear and it's a more urgent or a risky situation, the bear's in your carport or the bear's on your porch, again, seek safety first, call the police and they will do their best to get, to maintain safety in that environment. You can call the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, but they too are going to take an initial approach of information and counseling. So they're going to talk to the resident about how to avoid attracting bear into their yard or area. And largely, rule number one is to eliminate food sources. So bird feeders, compost piles that have meat scraps, pet foods that are left out unattended on a regular basis to eliminate the attractiveness or the food luring or attractiveness for the bear. And so that's kind of where we are in an urban environment. If they, if you have what is regarded as a persistent nuisance animal or nuisance bear, the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries will come visit and sort of document and then perhaps in a, in a very persistent or dangerous situation tranquilize and relocate the bear. Anecdotally, that, that method has limited efficacy in the Commonwealth because bears are common. In fact, of 98 counties in the Commonwealth, black bear are common to 92 of those counties. And what happens is Waynesboro transfers their bear to Salem and Salem transfers their bear to Shrando and we end up just trading bear in the Commonwealth. And so I think as a last ditch resort, tranquilizing and relocating is an avenue the agency will pursue. And so I think really the message is to exercise caution, avoid attractive nuisance for the bear and just be safe. And I appreciate too that it's one thing to give that advice to an adult who's going to be alert in the evening if they're taking out the trash or collecting, you know, the bicycle from the day or picking up the paper in the morning, but younger residents and children probably are not going to be attuned. And so if bear are common in the neighborhood, I would call the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries and seek advice, get, perhaps they can come and inspect the situation. And then if you see a bear, you can call our police department and they'll come and try to preserve public safety as well. I hope that's helpful.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. That's a great question. Anybody else? Is anything else for the, I'd like to share? Let's share a couple of things that took a part in is one is attended a tour with the Virginia Natural Museum of Natural History. They were out here, Mr. Hamp and I joined them on a tour of Fishburne and appreciated the staff that came out to learn about our community and as they begin their work and the programming and related efforts to bring the museum to downtown Waynesboro. Enjoyed that conversation and meet and greet. I spoke to the third grade class of William Perry, Ms. Sprouse of William Perry. I understand that Mr. Allen enjoyed that many years and that was so much fun. So appreciated the invitation and getting to interact with, with the kids. Just want to extend appreciation to staff for the Grow Waynesboro, another successful Grow Waynesboro pitch night the other evening. Dr. Hestodter and I were able to, to, to attend and as it was, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Hamp and appreciated all of the work and the new exciting businesses that are, will come to our city as a result of that effort. Next would be that, just a reminder, there's a 9/11 service tomorrow at the Waynesboro Fire Department at 8:30 a.m. and would, would invite Waynesboro folks to, you know, come join in that service and dedication and recognizing the memory of that event. And then last but not least, and I think Mr. Hamp's going to speak a little bit about this later on the agenda, is about emergency preparedness. Obviously, we've got a significant storm event approaching Virginia. Now, the governor's already declared a state of emergency and so as, as a point of reassurance and acknowledgement of the city's preparedness and our resolve to prepare for the event, would ask that Mr. Hamp provide a sort of update to that event and we can, we can share that on other matters if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Thanks. Great, thanks. Next on the agenda is a conversation about the Sunset Park development and a presentation. Mr. Hamp?
Thank you, Mayor Short. Dwayne Jones, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will review the status of design concepts and cost estimates to establish a park commonly referred to as Sunset Park atop the closed landfill off of Northwest Winchester Avenue here in the city. Since the last presentation regarding this opportunity, the staff did realize success in securing a $350,000 recreational access grant which will fund a portion of the road construction expenses. And we were directed to pursue that grant by the council and my gratitude and acknowledgement to the staff who worked very hard to realize success in that regard. Mr. Jones will refresh the presentation of park elements and amenities. At a subsequent meeting, the council will be asked to confirm a project scope and with that scope and associated budget. And part of our message this evening is that your staff continues to recommend that if we pursue this project, we pursue it with a full scope and establish a park that really, in our view, would be an asset that would distinguish the city of Waynesboro in the region. A municipal park atop a mountainside would really be an exceptional opportunity. And it's one of the opportunities, we believe, to borrow a phrase from the comp plan, language and vernacular, really would be an asset that would help us get ahead of our competitors in the area. So Dwayne will give a presentation about Sunset Park and then we'll move immediately into a presentation from Mr. Shaw, our Deputy City Manager, regarding other capital projects that the city is committed to pursuing.
Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening in another exciting chapter for Waynesboro's parks. Just a couple of historical slides, if many of you have borrowed this from the Waynesboro Heritage Foundation. And the original site actually was mined for manganese back in the day before it became the city's landfill and lots of folks referred to it as the scar. And it certainly was very visible from downtown Waynesboro in 1979. In 2003, the city closed the landfill and capped the landfill. And at the time, we decided, as those of us that have been here long enough to take our trash up there, it was a great view and city management and other folks decided that possibility that this could be a potential park in the future. And so it was capped and designed in a way that would allow that to happen in the future. And of course, it is a spectacular view. Those of you that have been up there, I think, will agree. Those two little knolls in the distance are actually Betsy and Betty Bell and Stanton in the mountains. So clear view and that was on an evening that had some, some rain showers coming in is a truly spectacular view in and of itself is, is worth the visit. Public Works Day picked up this as they managed the current landfill as it is today, as a capped landfill and previously when it was stored for refuse. And so they continued the idea of move Public Works Day up there, had trails, different things going on to sort of generate public interest. And I think they found, and as we found, folks were excited about the project. In 2014, we were successful in obtaining a $10,000 grant from the Department of Forestry and we solicited Virginia Tech and their Community Design Assistance Center, which were college students in landscape architecture and planning and forestry. And was a very comprehensive look at all of the elements in the park, especially the trail section towards the eastern part of the park, which we had not, in previous examples, studied very heavily. Also, all of the connections and one of the connections to the potential Croze Tunnel was also explored as part of that project. In 2016, we refined, we had three main goals in 2016 with some funding allotted from council for us to refine the master plan, again, hiring professional engineers and landscape architects to refine some of those elements, look at those elements in more detail. The main key of that project was to produce a very accurate cost estimate, also potential phasing for the project. One of the things that was looked at was redesigning an entrance and better traffic flow for folks. Also, a potential park entrance and sign on there, which is down here off of South Delphine, really. You pass that, you hopefully are using the recycling center, but for those of the, that aren't familiar with the landfill and used to take trash up there, really at that point, you stop at the recycling center and go any further. So part of this project was to look at that and see if there's a way to capture traffic off of Delphine and sort of make you want to come and look and what's out there besides the recycling center. Also, it's still currently, this is still the, even though it's not actively there, this area here was the old Baylor Building and there's still parking. So there's still active refuse department that operates down there. So we really wanted to take a good look at the wayfinding and how the public would interact and move around that area. So that was something we looked at with the next phase of the master plan. Sort of the crowning jewel as you sort of make your way to the top is that spectacular view and how do we take advantage of that? There's a main parking lot and overlook. One of the other areas is once you get up there and you want to go somewhere else, we felt it was, it was kind of confusing. You really didn't know where to go. You saw the view, but if you wanted to hike on some trails and do some different things, that you're a little confused. And so we came up, and this is sort of that sort of hub here is what I call sort of a trailhead orientation. We do believe that this can be a destination park for the region, not only for Waynesboro residents. So we do believe that a restroom and pavilion allows that opportunity for folks to stay longer. Without that restroom there, we find folks just, they move on. They move on quickly because there's not enough time to use the restroom and do some different things and hang out and also with the potential of having a structure there. Some of the other things that were on the plan with these large sort of what we call meadow trails. This area that heads off east is going to be mountain bike parks and hiking trails. We've had some great groups and some of those folks are here this evening that have volunteered their time to help build those trails from a community standpoint and it's really only scratching the surface. There's many more trails to build through there and it really is the second half of the park that not a lot of folks see. It is absolutely spectacular, the hiking trails, the forest back there is really incredible. And then also, we wanted to maintain, excuse me, maintain some of these open areas in what we're calling sort of open event fields with different areas that we can have different special events. Waynesboro is known for its special events. We have a variety of special events in our park that are very popular and Sunset Park should be no different. This was one that we, we sponsored in 17 just to sort of get folks to the park at a different time. Lots of folks, Public Works was during the day. We hosted a star party, which was a great afternoon. Unfortunately, the perceived meteor shower, the rain came in, those clouds moved over the landfill, so we weren't able to see, but it was a nice evening for those folks that did come. We did take advantage of that. Also, we were fortunate enough to host the Harvest Dinner at Sunset last year. I wanted to, that was a great spectacular event, I think, for the city. I think some of those of you were in attendance. To put a shameless plug, we are doing it again. We are partnering with Blue Oregano, excellent caterer down here in downtown Waynesboro, Basic City Brewing and also Autumn Olive Farms. And that is coming up on October 6th. And again, it's the Harvest Dinner at Sunset. So if you have not checked that out and get your tickets, that's the end of my shameless plug for our events. But it is a very, very nice evening and again, again, a chance to see a park and again, a chance to see the city from a different perspective. It is the highest point in the city with all the lights. Last year, there was folks picking out, well, I think I know where that is and I think I know where that is. And it's totally different perspective of the city. So I encourage you to maybe take a look at that. Also, as Mike mentioned, this was, Sunset Park played a big role in, at least from parks standpoint, in the comprehensive plan development and basically quality of life and also economic priority. Sunset Park, the eastern gateway and then the connection to the Croze Trail are really, really tied to what I believe and I think others believe to sort of range Waynesboro's resurgent and what are the kind of things we can do on the eastern side of Waynesboro. So getting down to a little bit of numbers, some of this was presented in the past and we've sort of retooled it, put it in sort of different buckets that make sense based on the project and the way I think makes a logical sense to break it down. So the entrance and lower trailheads, somewhere around 305,000, are access, road and parking and that's including all the way getting you from Winchester all the way up to the park, about 540,000. Overlooks and Plaza, again, that's up at the top and how do we treat that? How do we move people around? What surfaces are they on? That's around 160,000. The pavilion restrooms and our orientation kiosk, again, is around $260,000. The landscaping and trail system, about $216,000 on that. And then, of course, we, this plan was conceptual, it was a further refinement, but we do not have engineering plans. So it's typical about a 20% total of the total price of that to cover those engineering drawings so that it could be sent out to bid. That brings the total to about 1.77. We did and we were fortunate to get the $350,000 rec access grant through VDOT. We are awaiting further direction from council before we initiate that. It has a two-year cycle, so once we decide that, it puts us on the clock to finish the project and get moving. That brings us to a net total of about $1.4 million for the full package for Sunset Park.
And so I'll move to any particular questions, but I'll, we'll pass it over to Jim to talk about specific funding strategies for fund this, but I'm certainly available for any particular questions on Sunset Park.
If you want to go back to the previous slide, Dwayne, tell us what the lower trailheads versus the trail system is.
So basically, most of that is in this entrance area. So when I say lower trailhead, there is a trailhead here that starts and begins to come in here. Most of that 200,000 is focused all in this area, working with the entrance sign, redirecting, some modifications in the recycling center, dealing with the scale house, different things like that. So most of that is transitioning that. There is some, again, particular attention to how to deal with sort of keeping refuse separate from there. So most of that is involved in there, but we did lump this sort of lower section because in our vision, the trails go all the way from the top and you can come all the way back down to the bottom. That trail exists today. It's a little rough, but it, it's not to say that you couldn't ride up, park your bike here or walk up to this area and then walk up instead of walking up the main road. And currently, the way it's designed, we do not have enough space to design a sidewalk along the main entrance road. It's kind of windy, it's kind of tight. We will need some guard rail. So we're choosing to make this a different experience to, so if you wanted to walk from the top or from the bottom to the top, that you would come and take the back wooded trail and end up at the top. Any other questions?
How many, so just to spend a little bit of time on the, it might have been on one of the earlier graphics with the, the overall size of the parcel. If you could speak a little bit to like, how many acres are we talking about just beyond what you kind of look out to, but, you know, because when you get up to the top, anybody that's ever visited or seen photographs of it, you just, you look right out to the city and it's wow. But there's a whole other experience behind it. And so what, talk a little bit about that acreage and.
So this, this basically encompasses this small area you can kind of pick up in this slide here is that right there. So to go back, there's a whole nother half of the park and this is where all of those hiking trails. So we own all the way down past Jones Hollow, if you can just see it here. We own all the way down almost basically to the city-county line. So there's quite a bit of area and this is the area that a lot of folks don't get to see. And of course, this is the area we've mainly focused up at the top, starting the trail building here with volunteers to build the mountain bike and hiking trails, but we intend to extend them all the way down to the entire length of the park. And then ultimately, this is where the railroad trestle crosses and the Croze Tunnel from that point there is only about three quarters of a mile. So it's not out of the realm of possibility that you could walk from Sunset Park to the western portal of the Croze Tunnel and be, and only cross one road. So, but it is a key factor, I think, again, because if folks, again, assume that that's all that's there at the top, there's a whole nother half of the park. Total acreages is about 120 acres total of all of the city property that's owned. And again, if you just want to have a picnic, that's great, come do that, but if you want to load up the mountain bikes, come spend a day, come spend a day hiking in the trails, stop at Basic City on your way home, you certainly can do that there.
Great. Much more than a view.
Much more than the view. I think we should put that on a T-shirt. Anything else? I'll pass it.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the purpose of this presentation is to summarize for the City Council active projects for which the city has a pending general fund financial obligation. Many of these projects involve a partnership with the Virginia Department of Transportation where we have agreed through a resolution and/or contract to fund some portion of project costs. The city's financial obligation during fiscal year 2019 and into fiscal year 2020 is a bit more than $1.1 million for the project list I'm about to talk about. In your packet, I've also listed a couple of projects where we will not be required to provide additional matching funds, but where there is certainly some commitment on the part of the staff for support and project management. In a couple of instances, Sunset Park being key and as well, Nature's Crossing Technology Center, the staff needs specific guidance from the council as to how to proceed. To be clear, this is not a complete capital improvement list. You won't see a ladder truck listed, you don't see commitments to Virginia Museum of Natural History or the NERDA project or soccer fields at Basic City, but these are ones where we've already have earnest money expended or committed and where we are making effort in pursuit of the project. I believe you're familiar with the projects and questions, so I'll move through them pretty quickly, but if, certainly if you have questions, stop me and ask. And then I will conclude with discussion of available fund balance and hopefully that will illuminate the conversation about Sunset Park and other initiatives. The Southern Corridor is an extension of Shendoe Village Drive and is proposed as a 1.6-mile new roadway positioned south of Interstate 64 between the interstates exit 64 and 96. It will create a direct multi-modal link between Rossar Avenue and South Delphine Avenue. The project will serve three critical functions. One, it provides alternative access for continued development of industrial retail properties in the, in the city. Two, it will provide as a primary access road for the city's industrial park at exit And finally, it will help reduce congestion in the vicinity of the I-64 and Rossar Avenue interchange area. The budget for the Southern Corridor is currently $17.371 million. The city's obligation to the project is $2.137 million. The city's match is paid over the life of the project, generally matching phases such as engineering design, right-of-way acquisition and construction. The city has already contributed $150,000 towards the project during the engineering phase and will owe an additional $623,000 by the end of fiscal year 19. The project is currently transitioning to right-of-way acquisition. We would expect that construction bidding will occur around year 2022. The next project is the replacement of the A Street Bridge. A Street Bridge is a six-barrel culvert-type bridge that intersects the Steel's Run in the Basic City portion of the city. This is A Street as it goes out to Augusta County. South Delphine, or North Delphine Avenue is, is just off the map in question here. The bridge in tandem with the downstream Kirby Avenue Bridge is prioritized as a number four project on the city's Stormwater Improvement List. The bridge is. The bridge's most recent bridge inspection report lists the bridge in poor condition, and it's one of the most critical bridges in terms of condition in the city at present. City has received VDOT revenue sharing funds to replace the bridge to a VDOT standard facility. The cost of replacement is estimated at $584,000, of which the city will be responsible for $292,000. Design engineering is underway, and we hope the project is ready to bid in early 2019. Florence Avenue Bridge replacement is, includes the replacement of a 61-foot-long, single-spare bridge that carries Florence Avenue over the CSX Railroad. The 2016 annual bridge inspection report indicated that the bridge was in poor condition and recommended that a variety of necessary improvements, including a replacement of the bridge superstructure, should be made within three to four years. However, the discovery of a hole in the deck led to an emergency inspection, which ultimately necessitated closing the bridge to traffic. The city has completed design for a bridge replacement. The design is currently under review by the Virginia Department of Transportation and the Federal Highways Administration. We hope to be able to bid construction sometime this fall, and then begin a winter construction, demolition of the bridge, and the bridge will take about eight to 10 months to complete. Project replacement cost is estimated at about $1.9 million. Funding comes through a variety of state and federal sources, but the local match is estimated at $109,000. Greenway Phase 2B is a seven-tenths of a mile extension of the South River Greenway, continuing from its current terminus, which is down just south of the Shiloh Baptist Church, and then continuing north to North Park. The DuPont Company will complete a small portion of the Greenway in the vicinity of Shiloh Baptist Church as part of their stream bank remediation work. Project cost is currently estimated at $588,000. This is funded through a reimbursable grant program sponsored by the Virginia Department of Transportation. City share of the project will be $117,600. Preliminary engineering for the project is complete. We anticipate final engineering right-of-way acquisition will take place in late 2018 and into 2019, with construction commencing late 2019 or early 2020. Greenway Phase 3 is conceived as a half-mile pedestrian and bicycle facility connecting the existing Greenway trailhead at Arch Avenue to Ridgeview Park through the historic Tree Streets neighborhood. And currently, we've evaluated several different routes through the Tree Streets. We will also evaluate an additional route along the South River, although we anticipate that that will be, would be a very costly venture. Current project cost is estimated at 1.09 million, and is 100% funded through a state program. An engineering consultant has been selected for the project. We anticipate beginning public outreach and design later this fall. We hope to initiate construction in 2020. I won't elaborate on Sunset Park, as you've just received a more detailed presentation on the park. As Mr. Jones noted, VDOT has provided a $350,000 recreational access grant. The local share of the project is conceived would be a bit more than $1.4 million for a total cost of almost $1.8 million. Nature's Crossing Technology Park includes the development of a 160-acre industrial tract owned by the city of Waynesboro. We will soon complete engineering design for the, the project, and so we will provide council with a more detailed presentation in October. Currently, the project is estimated as a $12.9 million project, and that includes the construction of a road, as well as onsite and offsite water and sewer facilities and stormwater facilities. VDOT is providing $5.1 million towards the road construction. Those funds are included in the Southern Corridor project, so in other words, that $5.1 million is part of the $17 million Southern Corridor project. I've included a couple of projects in your packet. One is the $1.6 million replacement of the city's enterprise resource planning software, and I mention it simply because we hope to conclude the project early in the summer of 2019. We may need some additional funds, small dollars in relative terms to the overall project, to finish the project out, mostly for the distribution installation of the software in the field. For instance, place, the software would be available for building inspectors and other folks. And then also, we're working on a sidewalk project on Rosser Avenue that is funded, again, through a VDOT revenue sharing program. Council has provided matched, that's a $92,000 project, and it will create a sidewalk on the north side of Rosser Avenue between Tiffany Drive and Lucy Lane, and a small section of sidewalk along Lucy Lane. Turning our attention to available dollars, I've provided in your packet what we consider to be a current rendering of the general fund committed fund balance. I would caution you that these are not audited dollars, and so that, that they should not change appreciably, but I just provide that caution. Typically, when we talk about fund balance, that's a balance sheet exercise, and the most reliable source of the information is contained in the annual comprehensive audit of, of your finances, the CAFR. The current general fund committed fund balance is a bit more than $5.2 million. There's also a $720,000 balance in the undesignated capital projects fund, the 410 Fund, and these funds are available to the city council and can be used at your discretion. They can only be used by the city council, by the way. I would highlight a couple of things about the dollars, though. In yellow, I've highlighted several committed reserves that were established by the council for specific purposes. First, the Augusta County Service Authority Landfill Capital Improvement Reserve at $350,000. These are monies that we have been setting aside in anticipation of the day when, as a partner, as, as we're a partner in the Augusta County Service Authority's landfill operation, we'll be asked to make a large contribution for the opening and closing of a new cell there. Also, you have about $500,000 in Revenue Stabilization Fund. Some might say that relative to the size of the operation, that's a bit on the low side. And then finally, the council directed the staff to set aside funds from recent tax rate increases and set up a school debt reserve. And so, I would say that those funds are ones that we, we at the staff level would not recommend that the council utilize for, for projects. Next, in orange, I've highlighted a couple of reserves, the technology reserve, governmental equipment replacement reserve, and the governmental facility maintenance reserve. The technology reserve currently has $4,600. I would point out that we've used more than $100,000 in the current fiscal year from that reserve for replacement of computer hardware and equipment, not related to the ERP replacement. And then the governmental equipment reserve is currently at about a $240,000 balance. Facility maintenance is, balances more than a million dollars. Typically, we find that between those reserves, we utilize anywhere from $800,000 to more than a million dollars in the annual budget process to do either computer upgrades, or to replace vehicles, police cars, things like that, or to maintain buildings, not to do the larger building maintenance. This isn't for replacing carpet or painting, but for instance, the replacement of air-conditioning systems, we'll be doing, replacing drive-it, or stucco at the Rosenwall Building, those kinds of larger projects. We like to go into the budget season with about a $500,000 balance in each, the governmental equipment, facility maintenance, about $100,000 in, in technology reserve. Right now, the facility maintenance reserve seems inflated, because we've been taking money that came from the reimbursement of, from bond proceeds for this, the high school project into that. In other words, in anticipation of borrowing money for the high school renovation project, the city council expended money for engineering, for the purchase of properties with a reimbursement resolution that essentially said that when we receive bond proceeds, we would pay ourselves back and replace the, the money into the, the general fund committed fund balance. So, another way to look at it is to take the committed fund balance of just more than $5.2 million, and to reduce it by the school debt reserve of $1.2 million, the revenue stabilization reserve of $500,000, the Augusta County Service Authority Landfill Capital Reserve of $350,000. Assume that we would want to retain about a million dollars for equipment and facilities. The other smaller reserves that were listed on, on, in the reserve list, economic developments reserve for the health department, the library, totaled about $60,000. And then finally, holding back the $1.1 million that's required for the projects that we've just discussed, leaves a balance then of, in the committed reserves for undesignated projects or undesignated uses of just less than a million dollars, $162,448. Add to that the undesignated capital 410 reserve, and you come to a balance of about $1.6 million, almost $1.7 million. And then finally, I would add that in December, we expect to get the next payment on the Middle River Regional Jail buy-in agreement, and that's about $635,000. So, that number will grow by December to a bit more than $2.2 million. Now, having said that, again, I would note that the revenue stabilization reserve, some would, would observe as somewhat low for the size of our operation, and so I think there's some comfort in knowing that you, you maintain a healthy reserve of undesignated funds. But nonetheless, the point being that the council certainly has some, some room to operate and to pursue a capital project if it would like. That's my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions that the council may have. Again, I, I would reiterate that in the very near future, we're, we at the staff level are looking for direction from the city council relative to the Sunset Park project, and then, in the not-too-distant future, I think we'll look for direction as to the development of the Nature's Crossing Technology Center. Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Jim, do we have any questions for Mr. Shaw?
A couple, a couple of thoughts. First is, and not particularly related to the financials, but just a couple of questions about the projects. The, the South River Greenway Phase 3, the project that would move from Arch to Ridgeview, paralleling or through the Tree Street Historic District, is that obviously there's, I think, there's not probably one of us that hasn't heard from a resident of the Tree Streets, and some, some concerns about that. And, you know, the, the planning, in essence, that went into the, the plan that exists today, happened on a prior council, a very different composition. And so, I, I think it appropriate, I've just looked at my colleagues, I think appropriate for, for this council to have a conversation about options very early on, before you get too far along in earnest, to ensure that, you know, it's, we're understanding the history of how, you know, what's, what's sort of happened in the past, and, and, and other ideas that we think are, are worthy for consideration.
I would agree. It's a conversation that the staff has had, and we've had a conversation with consulting engineer about the need to look at a variety of alternative routes, that certainly there's a route that was conceived some years ago in the original citywide Greenway plan, and then that was somewhat shaped up in recent years by a group from Virginia Tech. But as we've talked to residents in the neighborhood, there are at least two other routes that we feel like we need to explore and at least put dollars to, and, and give some thought to their viability. One of the things that we feel like is crucial is to have some neighborhood meetings and general public input, and certainly, a presentation discussion with the city council before we proceed to engineering design.
Okay, great. Yeah, I definitely would, would support, earlier is the better. Next, next question I had was, so, I think it was really, where's the other note there? Oh, for the South River Greenway Phase 2B, so that, where the Greenway currently ends near Shiloh and would move through North Park, the DuPont section, it said that they're working on that one section. Do we have a timeline of, of when that might go live, or you?
DuPont is pressing us currently for various arrangements to be able to proceed, that I, you know, they're mobilized in the city right now, their crews have been working in the city. So, I think if, if we were able to clear certain hurdles and DuPont can clear certain property owner issues, they would proceed this fall with, with that section of work. Now, the first section is for stream bank remediation, so what people would see early on really is remediation work, but then, what DuPont has committed to the city is that they would leave us with essentially a trail base behind the Shiloh Baptist Church.
Okay, and then, so we'd come back in with an, with an asphalt overlay on top of that?
Correct.
Okay, great. Great, that's helpful. Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Shaw? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Item number six this evening, under boards and commission appointments, to consider appointing two individuals to the planning commission, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this evening, the council's asked to consider two appointments to the planning commission. One appointment will be to a full four-year term expiring August 31, 2022. Ms. Noelle Owen is presented for consideration for that appointment. The other appointment to the planning commission is filling an unexpired term that ends August 31, 2021, and Mr. Michael Gibson, I believe is the appointment there.
Thank you. So, with that, I'll just, first off, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Noelle Owen and Mr. Gibson to the planning commission in terms expiring August 31, 2022, and December, August 31, 2021, respectively?
So moved.
Press, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I would just offer up our sincere appreciation. We got a lot of great applications from a lot of applicants, and we are so appreciative. No, I'm, I'm appreciative of, of folks taking the time. What an exciting time for our city and civic engagement, and I just want to extend an appreciation to those individuals that took the time to apply, and appreciate that. Having said that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B is to consider appointing a representative to the Valley Community Services Board, Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question on my agenda? It says number six was ordinance and courthouse security upgrade. Did that get pulled, or?
Out of, it is not. It's just out of, I have that as my number seven over here, but we can, I'd ask, maybe if we can just go to 6B, and then, but that's on the next one on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for noticing that. Okay, so number 6B is to consider appointing a representative to the Valley Community Services Board, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. So, this is an appointment filling an unexpired term that would conclude on August 31, 2020, and Ms. Nicole Nicholson, the Director of Human Resources for the city of Waynesboro, is presented for your consideration. I think it's important to note that Ms. Nicholson is a... I think it's important to note that Ms. Nicholson is a resident of the county. However, the bylaws of the Valley Community Services Board allow that the government entity members may appoint their employees as representatives. So Waynesboro would have three resident representatives to the board, and Ms. Nicholson would be the governmental organizational representative. And she presently serves on the Human Resources Committee as a layperson, and that was a means by which our organization recently established to cultivate interest in board service and leadership, and so it's proven successful in that regard.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Nicholson to the Valley Community Services Board, filling an unexpired term, ending August 31, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, which is the appropriation ordinance for courthouse security, which would appropriate $7,315 from the courthouse security reserve upgrade metal detecting equipment for the city courts. Mr. Hamp?
So a couple of key points for the council and listening public's benefit. These upgrades come at the request and recommendation of the city sheriff. You're probably aware and recall from our previous budget work, the desire by the circuit court judge to improve security in the building. We've applied some resources to improving the staffing, and the sheriff requests this appropriation to upgrade the equipment. The courthouse security reserve is funded by court fees, so these, this purchase, if approved, will not be accomplished with local tax revenue, but rather, be assessed to patrons of our court system. The purchase would occur on state contract, and I think this is appropriate, and I would support the sheriff's request and recommendation.
Okay, are there any questions? Thank you. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Great, thank you. Items introduced this evening, we'll consider at our subsequent council meeting. Okay, the next item is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. I have one item this evening related to your comments under matters from council. I'd like to follow up with one quick piece, additional piece for the bear commentary. If you go to the Police Department's Facebook page, or the city of Waynesboro's central Facebook page, we've posted an informative video prepared by the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries that will probably do a much more informative and complete presentation of some of the advice that I furnished earlier. Regarding the storm, I would say that our organization and community enjoys the benefit of having some rather senior personnel in our public works and public safety agencies. We are particularly fortunate in, with respect to our Director of Emergency Management, Mr. Gary Kreiser. Most of us who have been in the organization have been through a significant storm or flooding event, and that's helpful as we move forward and serve the community and anticipate another potentially significant event. Our staff have been receiving information from the Commonwealth and from the National Weather Service since yesterday. I would give the state some credit in that regard. Their Department of Emergency Management communicate regularly through the regions and to local emergency managers, and their information is helpful, not only with respect to weather forecasting, but also the coordination of resources. Should a community need additional equipment or staff resources in response to an emergency, then they can fulfill through their own organization. At this point, I would encourage residents to continue to watch the forecast, that we will begin, our organization will begin specific implementation probably around midday tomorrow when we have an increased confidence in some of the forecasts and the track of the storm and the potential rain associated with the storm. Our biggest concern, and the biggest concern for the residents, should be the eventuality that the storm tracks through the valley and stalls or moves through at a slow pace. I'm sure we're all aware that our areas received significant rain and regular rain over the previous month, and the ground is saturated, and the waterways are already full. And so, a storm event that stalls over our area and delivers seven to 10 inches of rain will produce a significant flooding event. And by significant, I think in the worst-case eventuality, we would see water in areas that natives of the area haven't seen water before. I don't say that to alarm the community or the council, and we will know more, again, as we increase our confidence in forecasts. But the models suggest to us that in the worst-case scenario, we would have a very serious event that would present challenges that we haven't seen before, at least in our service or residency in the community. So, watch the weather. I don't think it's too soon to begin to prepare and follow guidance that's available either through the National Weather Service, our website, or generally through the media. Our staff, Mr. Kreiser, will continue to communicate through our website and through the public media. You should visit, if you've not already done so, visit the Department of Emergency Management website on our, on the city's website, and at that location, you can enroll in automatic alerts and sign up for the reverse 911 system, which, in the event of a serious and urgent need to, say, evacuate an area or alert you to a boil water situation, our, we have automated communication methods to deliver those messages. And so if you live in the floodplain or near the floodplain, I don't think it's too soon to start taking precautionary measures around your home and contemplate the potential need to evacuate, again, in the event that the worst-case models are realized with the track of the storm and the volume of rain that we receive.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Appreciate it. Next on the agenda this evening is citizen comment period.
So, no one has signed up to speak, but I might take a moment to deliver a public service message. The citizen comment period has been included as an element of council meetings for as long as I can remember, and it's an appropriate occasion for residents to either alert the council and the staff to needs in their neighborhood or needs in the community, to share perspective on public business, the business that might come before the council or is coming before the council. And so, my, communicating with the mayor and other members of council, we want very much to preserve that opportunity and feel that it's important to do so. Likewise, we want to remind citizens that when you communicate to the council, to be respectful of opposing views and fellow citizens, and to demonstrate that respect by the language that you use and the message that you deliver, and to also respect the lady and gentleman that serve on this body. And that citizen comment period is just that, that that's an opportunity for the, for residents to deliver a message for the benefit of the council. It typically is not an opportunity for a question-and-answer period, or to seek information from the council, that, one of the great things about working in the city of Waynesboro is most of our staff, and I know at least in my office and in the subordinate offices, we're fairly accessible folks, either through email, or telephone call, or walk and visit. And so if you have a desire for information, visit us, and I think that the council members maintain a healthy habit of returning phone calls. So take those opportunities to seek information, but use the citizen comment period to share respectfully your views about matters of public business. So it's a good opportunity to share that message, since we don't have speakers signed up this evening.
Okay, good. I appreciate you taking the time to that, and it's certainly been a topic of conversation from our last meeting, and I think appropriate to just respectfully ask folks to be kind and respectful to opposing views. So, that said, that concludes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.